All right, 7:00 AM, call meeting to order. Give everybody an attendance and stand for the board of members.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with evergreen justice and.
Hi, everybody. First item up will be to approve the meeting agenda. Good?
Yep.
Motion to approve the meeting agenda?
No.
Motion by Gray, do we have a second?
Second.
My Andrew. Any discussion on the agenda? If we have no discussion, those in favor of approving the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, nay. Motion carries. So we have the Board of Education Superintendent Evaluation Statement. This will have been writing to a meeting to write. We also have this in writing if need be. So I will read the evaluation statement. Last meeting, we closed the meeting and did an evaluation. So Mr. Cork has demonstrated exceptional leadership as superintendent for the 24, 25 school year, consistently meeting or surpassing expectations in his role. One of his key achievements has been guiding the school district through a comprehensive enrollment analysis process, enabling informed decisions regarding staffing and programming. Mr. Cork's proactive engagement with the community has led to significant enhancements in curriculum and course offerings, addressing both student needs and local workforce requirements. His efforts to improve district marketing through newsletters, social media campaigns, and an updated school website have been commendable. As we anticipate the 2025, 26 school year, he'll continue to guide improvements of buildings and grounds, safety and security, food service, technology, and teaching and learning. We express our gratitude to our outstanding staff, leadership team, community, and especially all students for their continued support and dedication under Mr. Cork's expert guidance. Now, opportunity for visitors to address the board. Looks like there's nobody here to address the board. So we have some acknowledgements, summer food service programming staff, summer club bikes coordinator and staff, summer weight room coaches, and summer custodial staff. Mr. Cork, if you have any data.
Only thing I need to, I want to add is just thank you to all of our staff, summer staff, for all their work, their time, and their effort to make it a good summer for all kids and staff involved. Thank you.
Has most of that run down here?
Yep.
All right, we'll move on to administrative reports. Mr. Delcy, do you have the elementary report?
First of all, it's a big day at the elementary as the letters should be in mailboxes today. So students will be finding out who their teacher is. So hopefully, we have a lot of excited families and students today when the mail comes. As far as hires go, we have Mrs. Snavely, who will be a part-time special ed teacher this year at elementary. Two new peers, Allison Jensen and Faith Batten, both will be working in our first pair of professionals. Yesterday, we had a new teacher workshop for Cassie Klopfstedt, which went well. She's very familiar with the building, has worked in this para. She's doing taught in her building, so very familiar, but a different role in access this year. So her and Mrs. Johnson got to spend all afternoon working together and kind of going over what their weather looked like for her in the access room. Workshops are next week, the 25th through the 28th, for all teachers. And then our open house, we're doing a little different this year. It is Thursday instead of Wednesday. And the reason for that is we're trying something different where we are doing pictures on Thursday. The photography place was busy Wednesday with other schools, so they could do it Thursday. So that's why we're doing it Thursday. If families can't make it, if they're not there that night, we do have a regular picture day like we've always had in the past, but we're hoping we get at least like 90% of the kids and staff picture done. So usually when we do a picture day during school, there's, we can only do so many at a time and we have kids that end up with spilled stains on their shirts or things like that. So we're hoping with the parents bring them in, they can do their picture. They'll show the parents a picture right away and pictures, parents will be like, yep, that's a good one. So there should be a lot less retakes that have to be done. With that, Club Bikes is also going to have, be serving food out front from 11:00 to 4:00. We're kind of trying to make this a big kickoff, kind of a celebration, welcome back. And I know it's a different day, we're trying it, see how it goes, and maybe adjust from there. But we're hoping it's a great night and get a lot of those pictures done is, should be a good thing. When we look at the handbook, really, you know, a lot of changes as far as names and dates of things. The only real change, and we made this last year during the year, is we started opening the doors at 7:50 instead of 8:00, with breakfast being served back in the cafeteria. 8 o'clock got to be when the buses were coming and the kids were dropped off were coming in. And we had such a line and then it took so long to get through. So last year, the Viking Leadership Team made the decision that if we open the doors at 7:50, the ones that are dropped off earlier, we get some of them through before the buses get there at 8:00. And so that was a change in there that we'll do. So the doors in there, it's written in there, the doors open at 7:50 instead of 8:00. Other than that, it's just basically the dates and names of new employees. And I know the one page, Karen was still working on updating the bus contact information. She did get that done yesterday, so. Any questions?
Thank you all. Thanks. Mrs. Jay, do you have a high school report for us?
Our enrollment right now is at 370. We had a couple more kids come in yesterday. Mrs. Lage is back in the office. She's working through scheduling changes and additions. We made some changes to our master schedule this year, so she's been kind of working through the ginks a little bit and seeing if there's any things that we missed. So so far, it's going pretty well. She's working with students. Staff workshops, we will have just some highlights here. Technology training, our PLC groups this year are going to read the Anxious Generation together. That is a book about cellphone use and its impact on this generation. And then one of our groups is also going to work through the REDACT interventions. This is mainly our English department. They started a new curriculum this year, so we're going to work through the curriculum and then how to apply that to the REDACT and help some of our students with some of the new requirements from REDACT. Goals for the PLCs, use our information from Anxious Generation to support students. Use assessment data and strategies to increase student proficiency rates. And then we're going to continue, this will be kind of that first year. We've gone through a two-year, I would call it, phase of student portfolios. This will really be our first implementation in terms of check-ins for grade levels. So our groups will work through portfolio check-ins for students. And then department-wide, they're going to work through five ins and outs. Five ins and outs are the five things they'd like them to know as they come into that class and the five things they should really know as they leave. This is just helping our scope and sequence for each department and class. We will have open house on next Wednesday from 4:30 to 7:30. Seventh grade's our orientation at 5:30 with myself, Mrs. Lage, and Mr. Kosen. And then ninth grade is at 6:30, and this one is really led by Mrs. Lage. She goes through credits and really reminds ninth graders that they are truly no high schoolers, even though they've been in the high school for a couple of years. New hires, we have Charisse Guillermo, she will be ELL para. And then we also have Tamara Benson, who we recently hired after Tammy Trosbeck. I don't know if she'd call it retired, but she is retiring. She's been a great person to have at the high school. She has a great energy. First day of school is September 2nd, and then the week of September 15th already will be homecoming week. So we will be voting for royalty on the first day of school. The workshop schedule was attached, and then student handbook, just a few things that we updated. One, the big area I would say is attendance. When I met with the policy committee, we are going to have no note be required for students if they are absent. A parent phone call note. We also this year added on Skyward, they can go in and mark their child absent. So that is new this year. We also clarified tardies and absences, the number of tardies that equal detention. And then you'll also note that we made an update to progress reports and report cards. So we'll only send out report cards at the end of semesters versus at quarters. Questions?
Any questions? We're good, thanks. We'll move on to finance director. Mr. Martinez?
All right. Morning, everyone. Okay, so July, first month of the fiscal year. So not lots of activities. I'll be very quick with the treasurer's report. Again, on front of our fiscal, of our fiscal calendar. Here is our current approved budget that we approved back in June. Out of the projected revenue, we collected $155,000. So again, this is when we shared with you guys that there's dry periods. July is one of those periods where the state is practically going through all their finances. And then in the month of July, we received no state aid. So it's always good to have a good positive fund balance for that. Total expenditures for the month of July were just a little over a million dollars. So budget to date in terms of revenue, we collected less than a percent. And in terms of our operating month, it accounted for 6% of our total operating budget. That's what we have for the treasurer's report. We'll go on to page two. Okay, in terms of our cash flow, again, just to reflect how July is a dry month. We started our investment account with $6.7 million. We received $62,000 in federally. This is due to the summer meal program that we run, so we plan those meals. And then of course, the federal government and, yep, the federal government reimburses us, which we collected about 62. Drew $1.5 million from our investment account to cover all of our expenditures for the month of July. We were at $5.3 million at the end of the fiscal month. We started our cash on hand with $23,000. We had deposits of 1.6, of which 1.5 came from our investment accounts. Total bills that ran through were 1.2 million. Total payroll, just a little over 450. Quick adjustment entry that we'll go through here in a little bit. In theory, of course, we were negative 55 cash on hand. Again, we always drop from our investment to replenish our bank account. So total cash on hand at the end of July was $5.2 million. Okay, we'll go on to the second page. Second page, that adjusting journal entry, again, we did it to balance our books. Had to do with a participant and our health insurance that dropped off, so then we got a credit back. So that's why you see there we debit our cash, cash goes up, our liability for our insurance account goes down. So that's our adjustment entry. We always have adjustments in benefits because it bases based on enrollment and people dropping in and out in insurances. Okay, then we'll go on to the next pages, which is practically all the payables that we have through. One big thing, and I'll stop right here. This one right here, which you see Computer Share for $142,000. Computer Share is the debt servicing company that bought out the debt management branch from Wells Fargo. So they are the new debt service holders for our, for all of our school funds and everything. In July, we pay interest, and in February, we pay interest and principal. So that is what that large amount is. Okay, any questions on the treasurer's report? Like I said, very easy. Majority of July and August, we spent a lot of time cleaning our books, getting ready for hunt. So another piece that you have in today's, in today's agenda is the approval of the milk bid. We haven't done a milk, we didn't do a milk bid approval last year, and that had to do with the instance that we had in winter 23, where we started to receive a lot of spoiled milk. And started to receive lots of feedback from parents, at which point we had to practically dissolve the contract with the milk vendor at the time. And then we switched with Kemp's and to honor them. We followed school year 24, 25 honoring them just because we had to introduce them mid-year. And now we are required to go ahead and go through milk bids again. So we send out letters to all the milk providers and food service providers requesting them to send us their best prices for a half pint of milk. We take all the analytics in terms of how much consumption we have through the year, and we send that to the bidders, and then they give us a price per little carton of milk. We had four bidders, which is really good to see. During COVID times, we did not receive a single bid. We were literally begging people to serve us. Same thing happened with food service providers. If you guys remember, right kind of in the hype of COVID, Cashwa, back in the day, you used to get a food service provider, they dropped us halfway through. So it's nice to see that once again, food service providers are getting into the school market. So with that said, we had four bids. We had Cashwa, which is out of Fargo. We had Kemp's doing business as Castplay, which is our current milk service provider. We have Cisco, which is the new food service provider for many of the schools in the area, which was awarded, was awarded, awarded the winning bid through Lake Country Service Co-op. And then we have Performance Food Service, which is our current food service provider. In terms of the price per pint of milk that they're willing to do, you can see the price in the left column and based on consumption on the right column, you see what the projected cost would that be. And then at the end, we look at consumption for 1% milk, skim milk, chocolate, and what the projected total for that package based on the use projection. Couple of quick notes that I learned through milk bids this year, which is they're all getting out of the cooler business. There must be a, a cost associated with it. So the history behind it is every time you were award a milk, a milk servicer, they would come and then give you the milk coolers when we put the milk. They would give it to you as a, thank you for doing business with them. It was, it was a, a good service, but I'm guessing the market somehow is telling them that they're losing money on it. So nobody offers a cooler. And in fact, Kemp's, who's our current milk service provider, the two coolers that you see in the buildings belongs to them. But in the bid that we received, they served us with a letter saying, the coolers that you have there, if we don't get picked, we're either going to come and get them or we're going to sell it to you at a discounted price. I asked for that price and I haven't heard back. What, and I was just looking online, a milk, a cooler with the current dimensions that we have that holds 16 crates of milk costs about $1,700. So keep that in mind, so if we do decide to go with any of the others, we have to look for a cooler. I looked at recent availability, and they're able to ship within one business days and deliver to a school within, within a week or so. So we have that. We have that, to keep that in the back of our minds. Because we're using federal dollars, a lot of the times they go for, as you, as you guys, as a collective board, make a decision on this, there's two things that we need to look at. We need to look at lowest bidder, which is your most common concept, right? Lowest bid is the, the one that gets awarded. But there's also best value proposition, which we have to, if we decide to go with anybody else other than the cheapest, we have to provide a reasoning why they're the best value. Okay, my recommendation for you guys is although Kemp's is not the cheapest, they have been the best to work with. They currently have coolers in place, so it won't disrupt kitchen operations. Cisco is by far the cheapest, and the reason why they're the cheapest is because they're able to give us the discounted price based on volume. So one thing that I learned going through Cisco is that their milk service provider is Kemp's, which is cool, right? So we can award the, the winning bid to Cisco and continue to serve the Castplay quality milk that we serve today at a much cheaper price. If we award to Cisco, then we have to look at purchasing two coolers. Okay, which would be about an additional $5,000, give or take, if there's shipping cost. So again, that's what we have to do. You guys as a collective board decide what we want to pick, who do we want to award our book of business to. We either go by lowest bidder or value proposition. Okay, any questions regarding milk bids for the upcoming year?
Yes, sir. So if we retain Kemp's, would we retain the coolers that they provided?
I did ask the regional sales manager for that specific question. I said, what will happen to the current coolers? And the email that I got back is they said, we can sell it to you. We can sell it to you. We'll transfer the ownership to you guys, and they'll belong to you. And I said, what is that price? I think I can negotiate it down so I can give it to us at a complimentary loyalty. We have a great relationship with them. Like I said, my recommendation would be one of the two in the middle, either Castplay or Cisco. We can go run with either one. Any other questions? All right, that's all I got for you guys today.
Thanks. Mr. Cork, you have a superintendent report?
Okay, a few things here, July and August, we had quite a few things going on with parades and rotary, turkey barbecue, flying breakfast, rotary golf scramble, the parades with 4th of July and Pelican Fest. And then we had the Dr. Richardson OMP golf attorney. So I want to thank all the staff and students who helped out with these events and participated in these events. Open house at the elementary and high school, both principals talked about that. Homecoming week, just reminder, September 15th through the 20th. The Viking Gala is on Saturday, September 20th. So that'll be a fun time to see a lot of our former students and staff at the Viking Gala. Professional development in July and August, I attended the Mesa MDE Summer Conference in early August, which was a good conference. And then our administrative team had some professional development here in August. We had training through two days on mental health, which was presented by Monica Schneider, former student Monica Wesby. So that was really good training. Leadership training was presented by Timarks, which was good training. And then School Lot, we had an attorney from Pemberton Lot come in and train us on some items, hot topics in School Lot, which is good. Student enrollment, just so you know, student enrollment, this is kind of the time where kids are coming in and also going out. So we will have a better idea of our enrollment in probably the third week or fourth week of September. So I think by the next part B, we'll have a better snapshot of our enrollment, so. Special Ed Co-op update, we are fully staffed. There was not a lot to report on in our last meeting, but we are fully staffed at their special ed co-op, which is great news because staffing can be hard right now. We had a teacher resign here in the summertime, but we filled that position, which is good. Fall Staff Workshop, Monday's schedule, just so you know, it's going to be very busy. We have all staff in on Monday. That means all support staff and certified staff. So we start off with a breakfast in the morning for all staff here in the comments. And then we'll go to the fine arts auditorium where we'll have Welcome by myself presentation. And then United Way, Mr. Sarm will be there to present to our staff. Then we'll have School Lot Training. Kristy Hastings from Pemberton Lot will be there to present. And then we're going to have mental health training by Monica Schneider. And then we have a speaker, Hunter Pekey, who's been speaking at a lot of different organizations and teams and things like that throughout the United States. And a former teacher of ours texted me here a couple of years ago saying, you need to get him in. He's really good. So we're excited to have Hunter. Mental health training is really focused on, we focus a lot on kids. We're also going to be focusing not only on kids with our mental health training, but on ourselves to help staff. So that's a focus to help staff and students. So that will be it. Lunch will be provided by Minnesota National Bank. So thank you to Minnesota National Bank for providing lunch to all of our staff. That'll be in the high school commons at 11:00. In the afternoon, principals will have their meetings in the afternoon and some work time for teachers. Support staff will have training in the fine arts auditorium. So support staff will get their training that day. And then we end with an all-district staff picnic invited by school board administration. They'll be at 6:00 PM. They'll be at E.L. Peterson Park, and all staff families are welcome to join. And we encourage all staff and their families to attend. It's a good time, so. So busy Monday, and then we go Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. So a busy week, but a good week. Staff picnic again to 6 o'clock, just reminder that we will set up, we'll have food items there at 5 o'clock. So we'll start setting up at 5 o'clock, so whenever board members can make it between 5 and 6, we'll be there. And we'll be setting up and we'll start serving right around 6 o'clock. Bus transportation, Pelican Bus Company, again, remember a new name for our bus company. It's not Christiansen Bus Company no longer, so it's Pelican Bus Company. And if anyone has questions about anything about pickup or drop off, that they should contact Pelican Bus Company. Few school board agenda items. Acknowledging the resignation of Andrea Batten, I want to thank Andrea for her work last year in the evening custodial staff at the high school. Resignation, acknowledge resignation of Jessica Wainrich, a junior high volleyball coach. Wanted to thank Jessica for all her work last year coaching volleyball. And approve the hire of Brian Walters as a part-time custodian at the high school. So we want to approve his hire, and we're fully staffed in our custodial staff, which is good news. So right now, as of 7:30 AM, we are fully staffed at this time. So for the most part, we just need a couple of coaches and advisors to fill. Okay? Last item, employee handbook, just a few things in the employee handbook that we added or changed. Just a few things on page 10, under reimbursement procedure for the employees. We just want to make sure that we have a little bit more of how things are going to be reimbursed and that we need to reimburse, needs to be submitted within 60 days. Under, if schools close for the day, we just, a little bit more detailed, snow days outside the allotted days built into the master calendar will be made up. So we added outside the allotted days built in the master calendar. That's an addition. We added policies and forms related to violence and discrimination, links there, so if you just click on that. So just a few changes to the employee handbook, not many, so, from last year. Okay? One last item that I missed, tech training. We had tech training yesterday for staff, for staff. We had tech training yesterday for staff, for staff had the opportunity to sign up for tech training. We had three sessions yesterday, that was presented by Monica Thompson from Lake's Country. So she did a great job of offering three sessions for our staff, she had different topics. And we'll be looking to work with her down the road for future professional development with tech training. So that was good. It's good to have Monica in our building, she does a great job, so, questions?
Down here, I know when I click on the link on the website for employee handbook, it shows up at the elementary, so. Have we got? Any questions? I hear no questions, thanks. All right, we'll move on to consent items. Item A, approve board meeting minutes, July twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, regular school board meeting. B, financial claims and July bills. C, treasures report. D, personnel, we have knowledge resignation of Andrea Mann as a part-time evening custodian at the high school. Knowledge resignation of Tammy Trozvik as special education paraprofessional at the high school. Knowledge resignation of Jessica Weinrich as junior high volleyball coach at the high school. Approved the hire of Sharon Snagley as part-time special education teacher. Approved the hire of Charisse Guillermo as ELL paraprofessional at the high school. Approved the hire of Haley Feathely as full-time custodian at the high school. Approved the hire of Bridget Hall as knowledgeable advisor at the high school. Approved the hire of Allison Jesson as special education paraprofessional at the elementary. Approved the hire of Faith Benton as special education paraprofessional at the elementary. And approved the hire of Ryan Walters as part-time custodian at the high school. Approved the hire of Tiana Benson as special education paraprofessional at the high school. So those are the consent items, do we have a motion?
We'll make a motion to approve the consent items.
Motion by Andrew, do we have a second? Second by Brenda. Discussion, item, consent items. Hearing no discussion, all is favor of approving the consent items, signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, nay. Consent items carry. Item nine, business items, we have resolution, accepting donations. Somebody want to make a motion in a second?
I'll make a motion. Take for the resolution?
Second. Motion by Stacy, second by Greg. Discussion before I go over the resolution. Resolution, accepting donations, whereas every such acceptance shall be by resolution of the governing body adopted by a two-thirds majority of its members, expressing such terms in full. Therefore, be resolved that the School Board of Pelican Rapids Public Schools, ISD 548, gratefully accepts the following donations as identified below. We have Laura Klimic, eighty dollars, student accounts, Laura Klimic, eighty dollars Viking tee. Cookies for a Cause, five hundred and forty-nine dollars. Be the Light Scholarship Fund, Harper and Beckett Peterson's Lemonade Stand, two thousand three hundred and sixteen dollars for Be the Light Scholarship Fund. We have forty dollars from Anonymous for the high school scholarship fund in memory of KPO and Margaret Lee. Anonymous, twenty dollars for the scholarship fund in memory of KPO. Friends and colleagues of KPO, four hundred and twenty-six dollars. And yeah, four hundred and twenty-six dollars, that'll be for the KPO scholarship fund in memory of KPO. So two thousand three hundred and sixteen dollars for a lemonade, it's a very impressive amount. Okay, this is a resolution. Andrew, how do you resolve?
Yes.
Brenda?
Yes.
Yes, Molly?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Item B, approve the Viking Elementary Student Handbook for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. We have a motion.
We'll make the motion to approve the Viking Elementary Student Handbook for twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six.
Motion by Andrew, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Stacy. Any discussion on the handbook? Hearing no discussion, all is favor of approving the Viking Elementary Student Handbook, signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, same. Motion carries. C, approve the PRHS Student Handbook for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Motion by Brenda. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Andrew. Any discussion on the high school handbook? Hearing no discussion, all is in favor of approving the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item D, approve the employee handbook for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. And I will make that motion. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Molly. Any discussion approving the employee handbook twenty twenty-five, twenty-six? Hearing no discussion, all is in favor of approving the handbook, signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, same. Motion carries. Now, approve the vendor for milk products for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year. Somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion for Cisco, doing the math of the coolers and what, we're still nine thousand dollars less than the other vendors, so.
Second. So we have a motion, say you want to let go with Cisco, or how do you want to label your motion?
Uh, yes, motion to go with Cisco as the milk vendor.
Second that, okay. Okay, and motion by Stacy, second by, second by Greg to go with Cisco for a milk vendor. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all is favor of approving Cisco as their milk vendor, signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, nay. Cisco carries. So we have upcoming meetings, that's all the business items, upcoming meetings, the next, well, we have a staff picnic next Monday. September seventeenth, regular meeting, six P.M., so we'll be at evenings. And October twentieth, regular meeting at six P.M. So, for some, for some language. So we are going to be going into a closed session for labor negotiation strategy. Again, we'll cite Minnesota statute, Minnesota, yeah, Minnesota statute thirteen B, David, one zero three. And who do you need a motion to go into closed session?
Yeah.
Okay, well, there's a motion to go into closed session and.
I'm going to go into closed session for the purposes of David.
Are you wanting to adjourn it as well?
Do you want to add that, we'll adjourn after that conclusion?
I'm already done with my motion. Just be patient with me. And then subsequent to the closed session, this motion includes the board unanimously, unanimously consent to adjourning this board meeting, this regular board meeting at the conclusion of said closed session.
That work? Okay, motion by Greg, do we have a second?
I will second.
Okay, second by Andrew. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, all is in favor of approving Greg's motion to go into closed session, signify by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, nay. Okay, we'll move into closed session.